No liquor lines, we have a fireworks permit for I-29 Speedway for September 28th. Any other additions or corrections? All those in favor? I had a sleet last week, folks.
I'm leaving if you guys approve it, so. Yeah, unless he's anything else.
No. Good to see everybody. Thanks for coming.
Yeah.
Do you miss me that much?
I do.
Oh, as long as no other incidents happen this year.
See ya.
The only thing that I guess really took place, I went and had a visit with the governor last week. Had a fundraiser, met a lot of interesting representatives and senators.
Was that at the Pizzaki?
Uh huh, had very interesting conversations. Her big push is, you know, if we don't win this election, we could be in the world for, I'll put it mildly. That's all I have.
I had another meeting with ICAC regarding legislation changes for tax sales. It was interesting, the number of the day at 1:30, so we're getting there. We'll get Bill, Joe and Paul here shortly, get some opinions from her and go to the Mills. Good, Jim, it was fun.
Thanks, Eric.
That's all.
The Hills meeting in Oakland, which lasted two and a half hours, so it was quite the extensive meeting. As I had mentioned last week, as we have been having meetings, meetings every week, we now have a new CEO. And she's just trying to get down to the bottom of a lot of things that are kind of questionable. And this organization called Alice is no longer going to be part of Golden Hills. It's a Canadian foundation and wanted Golden Hills to be kind of part of it. So it was quite the agenda to discuss and talk about it. So I'm sure we'll have more next week, so that's it.
I can pull up on that, I think we're gonna have our own area office down here in southwest Iowa. Not exactly where at yet, but we're moving in that direction. So we can help the farmers and the counties out down here. Stabilization, money, grant money from the government. Instead of having all this grand paper you have to go through, things.
Since it comes out of Canada, they don't have to follow a lot of our reports and permits. And I think this is what's kind of thrown in a lot of the foundations of they don't make it behind it. So if they get it succeeded, that would be great, but we got a lot of legwork to do. And that's it for me.
Very nice, Carol. Michael, what are training?
Now we're gonna hold off until after the hearing, so just do my general discussion right now. Is that fine until, until five minutes?
Yeah, you got at least seven, eight minutes.
September 18th, so next Wednesday, I have a safety meeting down at the office. We have Iowa State Trooper coming in and he's gonna do a presentation for a couple hours. We're gonna go through pre-trip inspections, load securement, distracted driving. And then have time for the guys to ask questions and whatnot.
It starts at 3:00.
Usually we start at like 7:30 and then he's not coming until probably 8:30. And then, of course, we always throw down for a good pop-up and then a bunch of other users. We do have a water grader position open and advertised right now. Looking at this, they've qualified candidates for that still. We had it open earlier and then reviewed our applicants and decided we'll only go ahead and keep it open and accept some more applications. That is for the grader territory.
So you want to keep that open for a couple hundred weeks, is what you're planning?
We have it open right now, we'll keep it for the minimum 10 days, but we have it listed as an opposition. That's for the territory, we have it blended with just the territory kind of by what I'm saying.
A good territory.
A good territory. We have that open. We should be getting Millings on the end potentially today. I know I put on Facebook, we're doing it this week and this, we're doing it this week. The big reason for that is that State Bill called and said, hey, we're gonna show up in a couple days to run the roads. So that kind of pushed everything back, all the guys were out there, all the ground and stuff. State Bill was coming in on Thursday this week to begin seal coating. So we got them all reclaimed, graded, rolled in. We're gonna start committing all that first, so the guys are cleaning that up, getting it touched up. And then we'll seal coat the roads. And then we'll work on Cemetery Road on Henderson and then a pre-pack. Got word from the contractor on the 400 Street Bridge, we're gonna set up a pre-construction meeting at the end of this month. As long as permitting goes smoothly, we're hoping to start that maybe the second week or something. If all goes well.
So they're not worried of running into, I mean, will this take quite a while? Running into the fall, cold weather, is that a?
They can do a lot during winter though.
Oh, okay.
If they're gonna pour concrete, I've seen where they tend to heat it. Cause it has to be a certain, the rebar informs that it's a certain temperature. I've seen them pour concrete and I think it was probably 90 degrees. They can do it, but at the same time, if they can't do it, they're not gonna get charged working day because of weather or whatever. But they'll work, they'll, some projects, they get the free winter work, this one is not on the top job, but they'll still. Let's see, what else? Scrub seal being removed, that's set for, it's set mid-September, so we're looking probably towards the end of next week sometime.
I see you got.
We got it staked so that we know where the transition of the pavement markings are. So if we come back in, I guess, we're beginning, we already got it set up. Talking with Liz, Levi Road, Broadmore, she's looking at, hasn't given us specific date, but probably towards the end of the month. Looking to come in and do over.
Is State Bill doing that?
No, that's listed.
Oh yeah, listed.
And Kevin went to Hunter Canyons for a set of project from 360 Street. It was a success, he was awarded $160,000 for that project. We have 300 budgeted for it of our own money and then 160 that will be coming from Hunter Canyons. And that puts us, it actually puts us just over our engineering estimate, so hopefully it's plenty of money there for.
Are we awarded this every, every five years?
Hunter Canyon?
Yeah, it's 160, you know, don't we get?
Project, you can apply for it as long as it's available. We can go in three months for another project if we have one ready to get. They're only for grade stabilization projects. So anywhere you kind of hold that water, it's coming down the shoe, you're still with it somewhere.
I didn't make a motion for a public hearing at 8:15 AM.
I second that.
Got a motion made and seconded to open a public hearing. On revision for chapter 27 in Mills County zoning ordinance. Roll call.
Ouch.
Yes.
Mayberry?
So update everyone on this, all of our comp plan changes that were just done with Mills County. One of the action item goals that the public really wanted Mills County to relook at was the corridor overlay restrictions that had been put into Mills County zoning. And so the corridor overlay district really lies in the I-29, I-34 corridor. And when you would really read down through what the corridor overlay had in it, there were primarily five different land uses that the corridor overlay district did not want versus the highway commercial district that is established in that area. So you have highway commercial district that you're based on, you have corridor overlay, that was put over top of this, adding restrictions. And so what I was able to do was I went through with those five land uses that they really didn't want in corridor overlay district. And I integrated those into either primary uses of the highway commercial or conditional uses or took them out, depending on what the corridor overlay district had in it. The rest of the corridor overlay restrictions really got into and surpassed what you would see for zoning standards. And it went into design standards. Yes, that's exactly what you saw. You haven't seen any development in that area because when the, when a developer would want to build something in the area, they had to submit requests to the building zoning department. Building zoning department then had 60 days to review that. And it reviewed everything from what ways the building facing, what materials the buildings were constructed out of, the amount of paving that was required for that district was, for a rural development area, it was a lot of paving. That's something that you would see in metro area with stormwater discharge. So I think what I felt like was the best course of action really was to delete out the overlay district from that chapter 27. Mills County has building codes in place right now and they also have the highway commercial zoning district. And in just regular zoning, there's landscaping standards and buffer standards that are within there. All of those items really protect developments that would come in down there and what you would see for.
So no matter what, it will still protect the Lost Hills, right? They still need to do the landscaping and that sort of thing?
Right, and so yes, it doesn't, it's more of the river bottom area, doesn't have much to do with the Lost Hills, but it will protect the beautification of it, right? You still have a lot of plantings that you're going to do around it on the outside, just on your own landscaping standards that are within there. And the buildings that are going to be built, after the engineered buildings, just through the building code, they're gonna have occupancy plans to them, they're gonna need fire codes on there. So it's not, it's not something I feel like we need necessarily direct building materials or directions those buildings are gonna be facing for that, because that's what our buffer yards are there for. That's what the landscaping standards are there for, to protect that view of the outside of it. So we took that to the planning commission, reviewed with the planning commission and they did recommend, they did send forward the recommendations to the board of supervisors to approve these modifications to the zoning.
Did we extend this further to the west, or I mean to back to east towards the hills or not?
No, this will be, this will be a removal of the corridor overlay district on the map. What, I believe what you're talking about is our future land use map in that area, in that future area. And that did get extended more over 195th Street. Yeah, that they did push just to kind of the base of the slope.
Right.
Well, at least now it makes it easier for businesses to come in and they have all those extra locations that they've gotta abide and do. So that makes it a little bit easier.
It'll really simplify the review process and timelines for those business developments. They'll, they'll have, they'll have a set standard that they know, okay, we can get a project up off the ground in 60, 90 days easily.
Did we receive any written or oral or anything?
I have one.
Any other board member? Anything, any written or oral comments, suggestions? Jacob? You ready to have anything to add to this?
We talked about that in our development board meeting last month. I don't know that we didn't really have a recommendation or anything that everyone's bringing. My personal concern with it is that we don't, with potential of council lots kind of taking over development of the Bundy Avenue corridor, Bundy Avenue interchange. A lot of that stuff that's been going on up there, people slicing off 10 acres out of 40 and, you know, grinding trees and dog kennel stuff is all gonna come down this way. I think we've talked about the past, the need to, to look at the corridor overlay, make some changes. I think removing it completely without doing any other changes to process or making sure there's some review of some kind. And that, I'm not, I'm not sure that we've done a good job of making people do any landscaping. People come in and get a building from that, I don't know that anybody's been forced to show the landscape plan and put the landscape plan. I don't think we have anybody that comes back after the fact and says, did you do what you say you're gonna do? And so that's, my concern is if we remove this completely and we don't create any other process or any other enforcement of what people are supposed to do, you're just gonna see people slicing off 10 acres out of 40, putting up some junk. I mean, if you go down there right now, somebody looks like they're putting up a shed and a gravel lot. And I think that's kind of the stuff that you're gonna see, that, that's those are the projects that are gonna be kind of, as you look across, the whole metro area, I mean, there's not a lot of interchanges left that are open for development. We've got water in Sudas interchange, I think. We've got the ability to attract some kind of development, but there's gonna be pressure for low quality. Of course, projects that don't generate a lot of jobs and tax revenue, so I think, well, the overlay definitely, you can remove it. I feel that's the direct way to go, but I think we also need to look at our processes and our ways to enforce to make sure we're getting good projects that is gonna be susceptible if people's coming in and putting some junk in there if we don't do that.
Got it, got it.
Can you add a comment?
Who would be responsible, like Andrew said, for if they don't do landscaping, they don't follow the rules, the code, whatever? Who?
The building zoning department.
Building and zoning department.
Yeah, I do agree with what Andrew's saying on that aspect of, I think that at some point in time, we're gonna have to reevaluate the self-signoffs of these inspections that's being allowed currently right now.
Otherwise, what's the use of having this?
I mean, where you can look at that is for the billing permits and the billing codes, all of that. To say it's kind of tough to have it in place without the inspections out there of some sort. Because, I mean, we are starting to have people come into our office who have had kind of the nefarious builders who've cut corners and now are seeing a lot of damage, have seen damages to a property and they want reports to it. And we don't necessarily have them to it because, you know, we have the inspection card, their person who signed off on it, we can hand it back to them and say, you know.
Is your contractor?
Yeah, talk to your, you know, talk to your contractor, call him here. On the, you know, the lot he talked about, the gravel lot with the shed on it that's going on down there in that area right now. When I look, I see that part of it, but it's, that individual's kind of waiting on the review process through our department to get his, he has a building plan, they're ready to go, he just wants to start selling some trailers now, so. I think that corridor overlay kind of has instigated that a bit, you know, there's nobody there to necessarily go out and say, I mean, is it a violation that you have a shed out there on that property and a lot to go with it? So, but again, you know, it's like steps in the process, right? And I think that that has to be one of the things we look at as a county to say, okay, when did we start going with the self-evaluated inspections? And are we, you know, six months out, four months out from that? And how do we feel like it's going now? And once we evaluate that as a county and then we've done the work and we kind of make determinations where based on the recommendations from either myself or maybe even things that Jake is seeing out there. Or even Travis, or just the management. I'd be wide open to another kind of overlay, you know, integrating something like that, the one we had is just too restrictive.
I agree, if we don't have some checkpoints and they know nobody's gonna check them or make sure that they're following the rules, what are rules? You know, that type of thing. So with that being said, do we need to revise this and to make sure they understand that within 30 days or timeframe that we would have checkoff points to see that they did follow all the rules?
Well, again, to me, I feel like that comes kind of, our next step to this is to evaluate that self-checkoff thing.
Okay.
And see whether or not the county really wants to continue in that fashion or do we want to go back to more of a county-based individual being able to go out there and do that.
You know, if you want to keep going, checkoffs, self-checkoffs, why don't you get a portal? I mean, there's, there's out there that use portals that you can take pictures and have self-checkup. Okay, this is what I'm checking off, then, you know, I don't have to physically send somebody there and check it from your office.
Yeah, you could go with, I know what you mean, ProCore software or something like that. Even for us, even that, it's like when they don't upload that, right? Or if you have, but that's your checkbox, they didn't upload it, they didn't check themselves out.
Good idea. Good idea. But our first step is to revise it, just put this in and we can take it from there.
Yeah.
Right now?
This is something to change out there.
Harry, no other comments, ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to, to close the public hearing at 8:30?
Got a motion made and seconded to close the public hearing at 8:30? Roll call. Yes.
Mayberry?
Yes.
But, yes.
And our next public hearing will be September 17th at 8:15, which is next Tuesday, correct?
We need to, we need to have either a motion to approve or deny the first consideration. Ordinance number 2024-2.
Did you get that number?
Say that again, to deny what was?
It's a motion, we need a motion to either approve or deny the first consideration of ordinance number 2024-02. Good tweet.
Basically, we can do serious enough.
Got a motion made and seconded to approve motion, or a motion of 24-02. Is this gonna be in the form of a resolution then?
This is just a you are.
For the first consideration and then you're gonna set a second consideration for Tuesday, September 17th.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Now I need a motion to set the public hearing next Tuesday morning at 8:15, September 17th.
So move for September 17th at 8:15?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Harry. Thank you, Mr. Matt.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Just wait down at C. Lane, it just got to me, so you put my part. I will, it's, it's, okay.
Thank you, Laura.
Hey, Mr. Jacob, we're back to Michael Hana.
Are you Matt then?
Yeah.
Alright, I'm Jake, Kevin's engineer, I'm Jordan, right?
Well, table.
One can sit here. Alright, so I'll kind of start, I've been in conversation a lot with Matt and Jordan. We're doing great, the developer out of Michael Hana. As you guys know, there has been kind of ongoing issues past the years of sediment coming down through the streets from the new development. And one of Matt and Jordan's biggest concerns is, I don't know if you'd say more recently or not, but their pool has actually been inundated with the flood. I, I call it floodwaters, it's overflow of the drainage system. They're right, yeah, right here, right? And so they're at the bottom, very end of the whole drainage system, pretty much. With new development, a lot of the old development, it comes down.
So it comes over the road? What you're saying?
There's actually water that comes down here, catches inlet, comes all the way through here and then the, is it a cattail bend? Road comes like this now, yeah, cattail bend. So it catches all this water, it comes this way, flows and then hits an inlet here, goes in the tube, down to the lake, comes down there. And with the rains we've been seeing, the system is at capacity, it doesn't hold it. The inlets can't take the rain fast enough, it comes, floods the street, curve to curve basically, flows over the curve, through the lawn area and then comes down around the back of this house and fills this pool with silt and debris and all that. So understanding is frustration very much. Yeah, if I was in the same boat, I'd be here too. We've had some emails back and forth, I think we've gotten along well, I think we've gotten to the bottom of it. I think your first concern was it wasn't designed correctly. I talked with HGM, kind of with the contractor, kind of with Craig, kind of went over everything, determined that it was designed to the minimum standards outlined in Sudas. Which even me reading through it, I was surprised at those being the minimum standards because it didn't account for basically a lot of the storm events we get are over the design when it comes down to it. It's still the minimum requirement, they met it, they're not gonna over-design it and they don't have to. So there's that whole caveat. The one big thing that I found is they did design where the system's at capacity, it overflows, it's supposed to go into a grass soil, there is a drainage easement between their house and their neighbor's house right there. But it appears that it was never actually constructed from the original plans. There's cross-section that's called out, it's supposed to be planted with native grasses or flowers and from what we can From what we can gather, it just never happened. So, where do we go from here is kind of what this discussion is about, how are we gonna get right? My recommendation is to put it in that grass swale. Um, the original plans, it shows, I think a foot and a half drop, is that correct? And it's twenty-four foot wide, so.
From those trees?
Forty foot there. Is it the bottom of the top? Forty at the top.
Oh, excellent.
That's the easement, that's not the cross.
That's, that's the forty feet.
Is this that?
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, I was looking at a twenty-five foot bottom and a forty foot top. With a one point five foot rise. So, uh, to me, I think that's very gentle, I think that's still very movable. Um.
Foot foot and a half, so it is. Yeah, we can get into the electric, but it's not gonna work.
Okay. And so the, yeah, to wrap it up, this is the original cross section. He has some trees there, uh, not exactly sure if the neighbor has.
There's a.
I have a background for it, but. Now, I haven't run any calculations, but I believe that this could be shortened. Still be aesthetically pleasing as possible.
The lot line is off, I'll tell you that right now, it's. The line you see, it should be shifted, chipped over.
On the left side?
It should be chipped to the right about.
To the right.
It'd be computer, I've seen it on the mic, I've seen it up in like eighty feet, so yeah.
I mean, you're talking.
Relative.
GPS.
Right.
Feet, so I mean, let's, uh, give it some credit.
So then you would have room to do, no?
No.
I believe that it would have to be smaller to save the trees and stuff, but I think it can still be enough to. The pool and potentially maybe we can build that more around the pool to further drain cover.
Is there, there is applied drainage easement there though, that's reported. Okay, okay.
So, that's kind of where I think we should start the conversation, so if you kind of jump in.
Yeah, first off, I thank you guys for hearing us, thank Jake for working with me on this. Um, my wife and I built this pool ourselves, we put prime on the nights and weekends, we put it together, it's a lot of hard work. It's meant for family enjoyment. This year with the flooding experience, we have not normally do it at all unless it's an extreme. Uh, even though we, we pumped it out three times this year and there's. Couple cubic yards of dirt in the bottom of it. Um, and the mulch that we have, that's been keeping around there, it's spread, it's spreading across the entire yard, all the way down to the lake. When that water runs through there, so it's, it's a powerful stream. I have a two foot berm there that's built and completely washed that out. Uh, it was meant to take the dirt, the, the water from my yard, not from the street. So, I believe what Jake is saying could work, but there's a few problems with the design. Uh, first being our trees are at. So, they're, they're going for forty foot at the top there, that's the design, that's right, so our trees are fifteen foot.
The trees are in the flooded drainage easement?
Yeah, okay. The fire pits, their engine fire pit, I believe is, uh, seventeen foot and then. Our raised garden that's beyond the trees are at fifteen foot as well. And also, if you look at the topography of the town, Jordan and I went to get some shots last night, I mean, I've been in construction my whole life, I don't wanna do that. From their yard to ours, there's several spots where there's at least two feet of difference. So having an eighteen foot cut, eighteen inch cut, doesn't even get it flat. You're gonna have to go at least three and a half feet on one side, at least get to eighteen inches total depth. So it's gonna be bigger than that, just do the top. Going further back. We went bitter research, looked at all the Google map. Um, images as well as the overviews, that ditch was never installed, so we go back to our self checking here, that box was never checked. Uh, at one point, there was a seven basin per plan, um, to the north of our house. When, uh, they fixed the drainage that came out of there a few years ago, they took that out. And that seven basin with the riser is now gone, so that is allowing the water to get there much quicker. When they put cattail bend in, um, that actually blocked water that was naturally flowing to the west and to Cory Light Field up there. And so now they're channeling more water towards us. And they put cattail bend in, they did not follow their slip permit. They have fourteen days to see anything that's undisturbed, it still has yet to be seen, it's two years later, it's overgrown and leaves. And so they left their sediment filters in on their inlets and through the last two years, so if any water is the minimum design standard. That could have gotten on that, which was not running in at full capacity, it might have been running in at one or two percent of that capacity. So that water was, yeah. There hasn't been any maintenance to it. And so these things are still being in propensity to causing even greater problems. So I, I feel like if it's a little bit bill gills, it's never installed. I mean, that's my personal feeling.
So have we talked to the developer before this? Isn't it falling on his back?
Yeah, and he's in, he got himself in a bit of a pickle because.
Well, I bet he did.
He has, he is the permit holder of the slip green.
Still owes.
And still at.
Boom, there we go.
But he's sold all the lots except two. So he's responsible for these contractors to follow his permit, but he has no leverage to. He's, I think he's, if he's telling the truth, he's installed twenty to thirty thousand dollars once the erosion control this year. He'll put wattles in on this lot where they're building a house, the house builder comes in and says. I'm gonna get my equipment and then they throw it off to the side, it rains and the sub builds in. And then he comes back and says, hey, guys, I'm the permit holder, this needs to be entered, and they say, oh, okay. And then they just rip it out again because they don't have any recourse for their action. We talked with D N R and said, what can you do, how can you force him to see, okay, hit him with a fine or something?
Right.
And she said, good job, you're a lawyer, but. Yeah, I don't care what you do, basically, we look at you if anything.
I mean, everything that Matt says is only developer.
It, it's in the H O A, he has the right to do that and he is the only leader of the H O A, there is. He solely gives that H O A position, I'd actually talked to him about five years ago about actually starting an H O A. And because I wanted to have some sort of control over the things that I saw coming. And he.
It's a place.
He got jet down. And it's just fine, I wasn't, it's, okay, this is your deal, and I've been wanting to trade for a long time. This is your deal, Craig, I don't want, I'm not trying to, I'll sneak out here, I'm just trying to help the direction of the lake. I mean, and there's been sediment problems at the point, like. There's a pipe that runs between us on the other side that runs in the lake. And I've actually dug, you can see right there, I've dug three sediment pits. Right there to control the sediment.
And is that a ditch?
Yes, but that's, that's a pipe.
That's a pipe?
Yeah. And so, I mean, like, that, it was filling in the lake right there, so our neighbor and I, we spent our own money maintaining that. And I've dug that two times every year for the last four years. And so, I mean, there's, I've had probably a hundred and fifty to two hundred yards of dirt I've dug out of there. I mean, the sediment's there, it's not, he's not controlling it.
And I'm surprised he doesn't try to, he concerned that sediment's going into the pond or the lake.
Yeah, I mean, he pretends to care about it, I mean, he, when he was developing, he got tabbed, didn't give me a penny for free one time, I mean. He, it's not like he doesn't care, he just doesn't pay any effort for it. It's, it's the same thing here, like, he tells me he feels bad and tells me to send him a bill and all that, but. Why, I gotta go to the solution department, send a bill, but I want the problem solved, then I'll send him a bill, maybe he won't pay, but that's alright, I'll figure out how.
That's right.
The sediment has that problem, I think, you have that same issue because they'll actually picture. I think I was the one maybe getting involved in my first campaign, they want to hold it in. It, it's.
Maybe you have some writer, I think, by your book, Susan.
And it's hard because the D N R should be the force in that part now. They are the guy, I think, they're not out there doing the inspections, receiving reports, you want to get involved, it's not like, it's not the kind of person.
If we put this well in, there's gonna be some other issues that it causes other than the feature we talked about, there's a fire hydrant right at the front where the swell will go. There's my water service line is within that swell. There's irrigation for our neighbor's yard that's within there. I would prefer to see a pipe like you have on the other side, I mean, a drainage easement would allow that.
On the other, in the other corner?
Yeah, just on the blue line here.
Oh.
With an area inlet over top of the curb, so you create a little swell right at the top by the curb. Yeah, I mean, it would not be cheap. But he didn't follow what he's supposed to do to begin with, so it, it's a common problem issue at that point. And if he doesn't fix it, it's never a problem, I mean, my original solution was, why don't we upgrade the inlets that we have? So the water actually goes into the pipe and it's not all flooding the street, I mean, you could add.
Because a pipe is a big enough.
I don't know that. Thanks for bringing up the whole, once it's all, once the vegetation's all there.
Okay.
Your problems with vegetation's not there anywhere else.
I don't, the pipe's supposed to have this little swell.
Yeah.
Most of the storms we get are this way.
Exactly.
So then it's supposed to flow through the drainage swell. It's a catch twenty-two, it should have been installed, you would have known about it. But there is still an easement there that you should have known when we bought it, you didn't recognize it, you weren't told about it. Now there's stuff in there that shouldn't be in there, we ran the same thing when we did the pipe up north on two twenty-nine. There was irrigation in it, it's drainage easement, there shouldn't be anything in there. It's a catch twenty-two, it's like, can't really say you guys did anything wrong because you didn't really know where, where any trees there.
Exactly.
If it was already built, constructed, you knew what we're getting into.
Yeah, I, I have a hard time saying that. My standard as a home buyer is to know when, where that is, because the only thing I got as a home buyer was saying that there is a drainage easement. And by, my sight, I can see that the drainage pipe on the other side of the house, I was notified that there was a drainage easement, not two.
Do you have a title opinion, title insurance or abstract?
I got an abstract, but if you don't receive that, that's why I'm buying. So, so what I get from the title company says there's a drainage. Doesn't say two, it says a drainage.
Any bad opinion? Who did that?
Oh, company council, most likely. Yeah.
So you're saying, yeah, one of the others too?
Yeah, the pipe's running through there and bottom, that runs all the way top, that's where the inlet's drained to. Right, right there on the bottom there? Yeah, yeah, it's running right along the blue line there.
What inlets go to that?
The ones that are from my house.
Your inlets right in here?
No, they're on the right of our driveway. There's, there's an inlet right here and right here, so there's, the water runs right through here to the creek, there's a pipe right there that runs through here. Runs across here, runs here, there's actually a manhole here, runs here and runs all the way down, that's where you see this ditch where that. That's why we have all that sediment down here, is because that pipe with the flooded end opens right here and comes down.
So, if they put one on the other side and then bring it all the way down?
Yeah, because this is the overflow, the overflow is right here at our lot line. So when you see the street flood with water.
Okay.
It tops the curb right at the fire hydrant, right?
That's the fire hydrant.
Yep, it tops the curb right there and then it runs between our yards. And then as the grading comes this way, that's where it moves and washes up the tube up front of my head and the water will actually run right across the pool.
We've got mulch all the way down.
Yeah, there's mulch all the way down.
It is kind of graded in terms of the pool. So from the street there.
But your neighbor doesn't have any of that problem?
No, they're higher than us, so two hundred and twenty-nine, it, it grades down, it's a gradient down. And we're at the bottom of it, which.
Well, congratulations, you got a whole ton of problems up right there on your property.
Yeah.
Oh, man. Wow. Okay.
So pipe inlet is. Probably the best solution, it's also a loss point, we're shooting it.
Well, why don't we put in a big enough pipe that can withstand four or five inches of rain instead of an anthill?
Required to.
They're not required.
They're, they are required to provide an outlet though.
Okay.
Which is the swell.
Which was constructed as far as being. So then it goes back to who is at fault? Is it the developer for not ensuring it was, is it the inspection company that hired the contractor?
We're gonna lay back then.
Is it the county for signing off on it? I don't know.
But, but Jake, just, just as a point factor, the developer, the contractor and the engineer are all the same person. It's all the developer, he hires them.
Yes.
They work for him, so. Whether it's, they determine it's the contractor or the engineer's fault.
It's still developer.
They're back to the developer.
It does, it does.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and that email, I was just saying, put myself in his shoes, I can understand that the pump is right in the checks. And I hired someone to do this and it did get done. Yeah, you, you expect you to get that, yeah, ultimately.
The engineering firm does their own design and they do their own inspections, so they, they. They should have, and they are the owner. All the processes are there, there's a.
Something.
Some of us.
And I agree with Jake, I would absolutely be with you guys, I'm furious. You put in so much time in your beautiful pool and mulch and it gets destroyed every time you have a thunder buster and. Well, just, I mean, it's aesthetics too, we have beautiful lot, right next to the lake and. It's flat, everything, we want to be enjoyed, just right.
Understood.
So it's kind of a laid out. We do that, a little bit of direction, what you're going to pursue. For me, it does matter, right, if the county paying for it, if the project is a better option. The county has leverage to put it back on the developer, you didn't do it, now here's the solution at one. Is that something you can do, so then it can help rather than solve it. Putting in the swell too, those soils out there just, they're horrible, they're terrible. Not that we can't get it stabilized, but you're probably gonna have problems with some of these stabilized.
Welcome to the Lost Hills soil, yeah.
Usually putting, madding down and stuff. What we're dealing with, what we dealt with, we've been in there at least three times, we put in. The matten, we put in rip rap. And grade it and looks perfect, here's the pipe going and the water goes right around it, it's a foot foot. And then it's very great to. It's, it's very hard to stabilize, that's why there's such a sediment problem.
That's right, when they put houses up there in the hills, it's like, this ground is not suitable. As you can see, it just is, that's why it's.
In, in this particular case, the, the developer did zero dirt worse to the property to account for it, I mean, he left it as far as. They built houses, the terrace still plates.
They've not been in the, using the grading plan, it's in.
Oh.
Yes.
That's what it was.
So anyway, I would say, the cattail bend is a four percent slope. I mean, that's, that's a massive slope on a residential street, like, that's barely walkable.
Ten thirty seconds. That's steep, yeah, that's too steep, yeah. And that's pretty common.
Does that start clear from the west, goes clear up to like, two hundred and twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-seven?
Twenty-nine, yeah, it does. I'd like to see you get with Deshaun, see if you have any recourse.
Absolutely.
I'd like to get some cost on.
Briefly talked over, she said it should go to the developer.
They should go to the developer.
Get a cost.
You don't have to sell a lot, they gotta be responsible.
Step away direction.
Yeah. And you don't have, or not.
Water service.
Oh.
When you're looking at the cost for the swell, that's gonna be good.
Well, yeah, it's expensive in the hood, pardon it.
Well, just open the soil around it, from where it sets.
I appreciate it, guys.
Thank you, thanks for coming in.
Any more questions, just don't be afraid to come back to us. Glad to meet you, Jake.
John's here, yeah.
Oh, yes.
That quietly.
All right, what's your input on that? So it's something that-
Aren't we right?
Original plans, the county did sign off on it. But also, the subdivision's a hard because the county engineer signs off on it, but we're not going through every single design calculation and everything. We do a final walkthrough, but we're also relying on their inspection reports, relying on-
It's not like a point by point approval, you know?
It's, they give us the reports, we look at the reports, they give us a letter certifying that everything was constructed as according to the plans and standards. So we look at that, we look at that, we walk through, make sure there's no major defects in sale. And then the county engineer signs off on it, yep, now we start our one year term for, basically, commitment. So I went through that process. And then now, all these years later, it wasn't back until the nine, this was constructed. Somewhere, somewhere ten fifteen, we should turn up. Now we're like, oh, this was never installed.
I just think the developer, uh, but-
Absolutely.
Let's go down, she knows, she's pretty well versed in my property, all this stuff, so. It's a, she may be down there now, I don't know if she's up in the magistrate or not, but you can give us a call, we should sit down with her. My, my guess is, my guess is developer, just based on that timeframe, um, but let's, I know she dealt properties, she's been somewhere in this world. She was pretty well versed in the case law, so.
Call back on it, then.
And of course he-
Does he get to choose what, because, because then he'll choose the cheaper option. He would write, well, let's install it the way it originally was. And he probably has all the legal rights to do so, which would be rebuilding the tree, rebuilding the fire pit.
Just like we do it, just like they did out of western hills when they have sprinklers under up on, they should just go and be tearing all their snow piles.
Yep.
They're in the right of way.
Yeah, same thing.
No way.
Up on Caillou Street, I think we-
And they have the right to do that.
We have the right to, yes.
Well, I know, but-
We put a pole, we're putting in signs up north in this subdivision, and it went right through the irrigation. I called the contractor and said, you know, we broke irrigation, but we're not fixing it, it should have been in the right of way, didn't have, but it wasn't. They have a tracer wire we located, wasn't chilling, it shouldn't be there, I mean, it's their fault. He didn't know. It was there, but that's also not our fault, I'm saying it's his, but-
There's some due diligence that should have gone here, and, and, and his builder, going to come back too, so there's, there's probably a few different places.
All right, Lonnie, so tell me, would you live if your subdivision without an HOA? Would you even consider that?
Yes.
Really? I would think every subdivision would want-
There's only a couple of HOAs in those counties. It actually function.
So, but don't you guys all agree on your road, and you all agree on?
We do, but many others don't.
I would think you would want to have an HOA, so you had some backbone.
There is an HOA there.
So you do have an HOA?
I do, and they do.
No, he said they, he tried to get it.
No, there's an HOA, they're grateful, called East River, I think, part of-
Oh.
There's an HOA.
Got it.
There's only one person who says it.
Got it. Obviously, they're not touching a lot of bases here. I mean, I feel sorry for you.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
One, one is, we can kind of point finger a little bit here, but-
You've probably pointed in at least three different directions.
And I think Craig is very open to, he wants to fix a problem.
Sure, good.
And, you know, means, you know.
Whether it's, it needs to be a group effort to fix something.
Install this, see if that works on?
I did the records, there, I sure, yes, there's trees in the drainage system, but there's trees in the drainage system. You know, when there are the drainage system along, apply those drainage districts, but they can tear the trees out.
Yes.
You know? It's the same thing here, it's the same thing.
Which, how far is this pool?
Well.
To the, to the end of the line or to the trees?
That he's with?
And what is a forty buck wide, anything more like this?
Well, you're into the neighbor area.
Yeah, he's his boss, yeah.
He's right on the line.
Which is his developer. He pull in by himself.
But the fire pit's too close.
Well, that is a neighbor.
That's it.
This is the neighbor's fire pit.
Down there, that's a fire pit.
He said, I just said, where he started that.
Oh.
So the trees.
Oh. And then the first fire.
And it's not like you're digging a twelve foot.
They, they didn't, they didn't level-
Eighteen, 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 fourteen feet.
Yes, he's done a way through the trees there. But there's applied easement record there.
And the fire hydrant, obviously, how that would have to be moved, just from the rest of it. The water would go ready right there.
Curse that, I might blow it a little bit, those easy, easy ones.
And the water line should be middle up, four feet down.
Probably five.
So if you're going, if you're cutting, you're gonna make sure.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll send it to you, I'll, we'll send it to the town to talk.
Yeah. We'll be posting that way this week, we'll also do it on the office.
Okay.
We're one of the best people.
Yeah.
We're gonna do it like you're willing.
Okay. All right, thank you, guys. Anything for me?
Can we make a mention?
It was quietly.
Well, you're not, you're not office today.
We took the direct up running to your place.
Something from that conversation too.
They missed you, Jake.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, so you don't even know?
And we're in, Janey.
Good morning. How is everybody?
Good. Were you concerned if my smoke there at the city?
There was a lot of smoke.
I heard a lot of people thought my house was on fire.
Yeah, let's just double check.
Make your money.
What's that? Um. I, at least for a pee then, well, we'll be fine. Oh, that's all I care about, is the black. Speaking of being in the black, I am here on behalf of the chamber, but also the, um, Glenwood Ragri LLC.
Okay.
And Glenwood Ragri, um, was successful financially. Uh, and that's due really for three reasons that I don't know, could ever be duplicated again. One, uh, the budget, we came in severely, not severely, we came in decently under budget, which helped. Our budget was very, very large, as you know, when I was here earlier in the year, and it was very scary. Uh, so budget numbers came in lower. Uh, we had a great amount of sponsorships from our local businesses. And, um, a lot of incoming donations, which helped a lot. For example, um, Waste Connections donated all of their trash and dumpster services, which would, which would have been about eighteen thousand dollars had, had the committee had to, had to pay for that. Um, most of our signage was donated by Brian Manning, back signs, and, and that would have been a huge expense too. So, um, at the end of the day, it, it did well. Um, with that, we were able to donate some money to the Mills County K nine unit.
Oh.
The Mills County Storehouse, the Glenwood Police Department to finish out their drone program, the Glenwood Fire Association, baseball softball club to help with that field one six five. Uh, some money towards the school slash booster club, or whoever pays for homecoming fireworks, and then the alumni association. So, um, and we chose those organizations and nonprofits because they were the ones who, who really helped pull Ragri off that base. That, uh, we are hoping to do a couple of deep crunches as well. Uh, the first one being completion of the courthouse lawn and holiday lights. You guys were instrumental last year in helping us get that off the ground, which I think, you know, we're five of those spritzers on the south side. Well, um, we'd like to do all, all of greens within the courthouse lawn, including the big one on the south.
And Janey, what the people's comments, they thoroughly enjoyed them.
Yeah, so this will be, I mean, five times amount, the amount of likes that we had last time. And then once again, um, Dylan Satherne from Sharp Blades Lawn here is doing it all at cost. Um, so basically, I just need your permission to make sure that that's okay.
We do look more elegant, speakers, what are you doing?
Yeah, so speakers are coming as well, if, if that's okay. The only thing that I need your permission from, um, that is the rest of furniture mart is going to do them, they did the one in Platsman, so we've been working really closely. And then I think Doug Bolinax will be the one who is actually gonna come down, who is at Mills County.
And I hope you're not planning on, let's go to the in-ground, they're all gonna be up above, right?
They all, they were all, they will all be up above with-
Because the in-ground is not-
I know, well, and there, there will be some trenching on the courthouse lawn, that's why I'm here. Uh, because they're gonna put the wiring in conduit at this time, so.
Still looking, Patrick's not moving, I think we could.
I didn't know, you guys, um. They, they said they'll do a nice job and try to keep it, keep the, you know, damage as, as minimal as possible and try to put it together nicely.
I don't know this Doug Bolinax, is it a company?
It's just, no, it's- Oh, yeah, and it, and the rest of furniture mart is, is the one helping us out.
He works for this.
Yeah.
Oh, got it.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So that's, that's really, and his, and here's the, here's kind of the, the situation. We're gonna actually have the, they had it with the speakers facing towards the courthouse lawn, and I told them to face in the way, so they're, obviously, you know, when you're shopping and- Um, and then the green arrow, it says reflects the expected wire hole direction, again, I don't know.
So are we, these aren't blue tooth that we have to-
We'll have wires. Yeah, because they all have- But I'll, I'll still be able to control the music from a, from a program on my computer or phone or whatnot. You can also make announcements and do some advertising and things like that with the program.
Okay.
We just want to miss them to hang lights on the trees.
Hang lights on the trees and, uh, let them do the trenching. Trenching along perimeter will be required for issues where wiring cannot be pulled to new speaker locations.
Sorry, they'll, they'll find out what wiring is already there to make sure they don't tap into anything.
They've been out multiple times, so I think, I mean, I think they're ready. But I did talk to the rest of furniture mart guy quite a bit, including this morning, his phone number is on here. I mean, I'm kind of the middle man telling you, I don't know exactly where they're gonna trench or anything like that, but-
I just think there's no other underground wiring in there.
Well, I'm sure they-
There could be leftover stuff, I don't know about the previous.
Local.
That's what I'm asking for, yeah.
Oh, sure, yeah. So what kind of dollar amount are we talking about for, um, your holiday lights and speakers and, do you have a figure? Because Richard was gonna write a check.
I don't need it, we don't need it, we don't need it, Ragri, Ragri's paying for it this time.
Richard, get that check.
Yeah, she's not asking that. No, I'm not asking for any money, no, I'm asking for permission.
Well, that's, this is a good day.
I know, I know.
Katie, surprise.
We made the motion to approve the use of courthouse property grounds. Holiday lights, splitting speakers.
Where are you planning on putting these up?
Uh, I think whenever we are ready, it'll be about four to six weeks, I was hoping for homecoming, but, you know, now we're only a couple weeks out, so that's all right.
Yeah, well, I second that, for sure. Okay, perfect.
A motion made, motion made and seconded for lights and trenching for stickers around the courthouse lawn. Is there any further discussion? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ode, which carries.
Okay, I'll keep you guys updated on the annual search every year.
Yeah. Maybe Thursday.
Thursday, Thursday.
With the-
Oh, thank you, yes.
Thanks, Katie, that would be a separate thing, like, she's such a- We have to remember that.
Well, that's very important, that's-
Yes, yeah.
So we're going to, Patrick then?
Yep. Great, Patrick.
Well, we can put on the end again for that, uh, renewed, we got the contract.
Right.
Correction this time. Again, just to, just recap, it's a support contract for the solution software, above and beyond the support. So it's there to go. And the annual fee is fourteen thousand nine hundred. I'll think if you had to look at, have a chance to look at.
Jill has been swamped, so, yeah, sort of, to look at that, ten hundred and fifty, but this one's the main steering.
Yeah, find it there.
Well, since you guys know this company, know what this is all about, and you're pleased and all, you can't wait days for solutions to call you back. I make a motion to approve their annual contract starting when, actually, July one?
We don't have exactly, yeah, I wanna make sure we can, but-
But it's every year.
Probably October first, I guess it can start.
Okay, for fourteen thousand nine hundred?
We'll second that, we'll see discussion, what are we gonna pay for it?
We just said we have to, it's selling barrels out, right now, we are catching numbers.
We could do it out by actually budget, just because I don't have a support specialist in the morning. And I don't have any prospects immediately, so.
Throw that in our budget and have us something.
Yeah.
Hey, there's been a motion made and seconded to approve support contracts. Well, that's for help out with solutions by this company, Renew Go Software. At a price of fourteen thousand nine hundred. Any other discussion?
Solutions was how much?
Their annual contract is forty thousand, but that's for the actual software itself. Probably four thousand, actually about, correct, yeah. For as long as we, yeah, yeah, sir, I think, but, no, mine is, we'll try it for a year, see how it works. Give us a backup option in case errors and solutions don't get there after the other.
Okay.
Any other discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ode, motion carries.
Thank you, Patrick.
Can Kyle talk you?
Uh, yeah, each one of us, as you said, he's gonna try to go to us.
I'll ask Katie to come in, please.
Okay.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello, Katie. I just need approval to shred the twenty twenty-four Glenwood RPS special election.
Twenty second cut?
Yeah, bring them in. I'm not bringing them in.
We can just throw the person.
She was gonna bring all the boxes and you can dump them in.
There must be made and seconded, approved shredding of the twenty twenty-four Glenwood Community School District RPS special election materials. There's a further, further discussion, questions? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Ode, carries.
Fine, same, that's all I needed, yay.
What do you need, Mr. Sheriff?
Mr. Josh Yobak.
Oh, we got an email saying we have to be here after war, man.
Yeah, that's, so you guys, nature.
So that's what I'm here for. Put it on the board, she didn't pass.
No further action, action items, I would make the most two to jury at nine fifteen.
I said you bet.
A motion made and seconded to adjourn the meeting at nine fifteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I do have a compliment for you, Mr. Sheriff, uh, I talked to a gentleman yesterday-